Check up the sound.
Check, okay, six oh two, let's start this joint. That committee and council workshop, I'm just gonna start the meeting, turn it over to staff. And I'll motion to end the meeting at eight o'clock or thereabouts, so. Get a roll call, please, and let's do it.
Yes, sir. Mayor Shore.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor Donowski. Councilmember Herzog. Councilmember Manilia. Councilmember Miles. Chair King. Vice Chair Savino. Committee Member Cunningham. Committee Member Magloz. And Committee Member Ike. You have a quorum. For FAC.
Google Nupia is here for a quorum, so. All right, Francine.
Hi, everybody. How are you? Well, thank you, Councilmember Manilia, for the whiteboards, because we're gonna use them tonight, hopefully. I know that there was a homework assignment to go home and think of the areas where you want budget changes to be considered, so we have two boards up there. One over here is for suggested area items that you'd like to see cut or reduced from the budget, and one for other ideas, adding new revenues, things to add or change, I should have said or change, up there, and I didn't. So feel free anytime to get up and write them down, because we've got to collect them and talk about them, and that might be the easiest way to do it. But the biggest issue that we have, I think, is to address the issue of how we prioritize programs and projects so that we are able to put a framework in that doesn't provide or that mitigates the happenstance of conflicts and that we can also budget from that point of view. I'd also ask our attorney if she'd like to say anything about that.
I think that you said it quite well. We have had this discussion a few times, including at the last joint workshop, that we really would like to focus on policy, and we heard each, we heard the majority of you saying that as well, let's focus on policy and put some policy in place that will help guide the budget and guide the projects working toward, you know, priorities and that five-year capital project requirement in the statute. So today we have some draft policy language for you to discuss on various topics related to projects for infrastructure. And we'll walk through that with you.
I also wanted to point out that council gave direction to bring the Florida League of Cities back to you to talk about borrowing programs. They will be here tomorrow in the afternoon from two o'clock until our council meeting, and I believe that Beverly scheduled meetings with each of you for a period of time to talk about the she told me that you. Okay, well, I can help you with that after the meeting. They'll be here from two until the meeting, and then at the meeting there are presentation to talk about the borrowing programs, which are available for anything from equipment to all kinds of long-term, bigger-picture programs. It's not any commitment to borrow, it's scenarios of what it looks like to borrow. So there's that. The second thing that we talked about was solid waste authority, solid waste, and that we might make some changes to the solid waste service level, and so we have met with Coastal. That's okay, no problem. We met with the Waste Authority, and we talked to the Waste Authority, they were unable to make it to the meeting for some reason. And we do think we have some information to report to you to change some of that, and tomorrow night on your council agenda is a proposal to amend the rate schedule in the contract, not the service level in the contract. That would be around two, but as we discussed, that we would be looking at changing the rates so that we could reduce that subsidy, or at least fund a portion of the subsidy with the commercial rates and the franchise, restoring the franchise fee. We are also looking at a reduction in the residential rates. Truly, a reduction in the residential rates, starting on January first. The number coming forward is four twenty-five, so. And we've talked about some programs that will be able to reduce that with more. I'm just doing some highlights to follow up from the last meeting, more conversation as we get to the topic. And then, lastly, we have a turnkey contract going into place for code and building services. There were some questions about that at the last meeting that we had. We have a net revenue number that we believe a net revenue number for building services, which should be ten percent of all the revenues they get. We are scheduled to sit down with them and come up with revised rate schedules and how the cost sharing will work, the cost reimbursement will work, because the cost reimbursement is not part of the ten percent. So when you look at the budget, you'll see that there's numbers in there for cost reimbursement, or cost, you know, cost recovery. Those are not final numbers. And lastly, well, you know what? You know, they say you save the best to last. I think they're all so good, they're all last, but. Okay, well, I won't say lastly anymore, I'll just simply say that, and we talked a bunch about the way that some of these numbers look, and remember, I said we're still in the process of trying to go through and vet them, that they are not good numbers at this point in time, and I would like to especially say thank you for any catches that you made in the meeting, because when we went back, we saw that absolutely the salaries were incorrect, because the public work salaries were sitting over in the general fund. So we have to go back and reapportion those salaries, and the other thing is, we talked about that the numbers that we have budgeted or the numbers that have been approved for the positions. Earlier in this year, two positions were added for public work, so when we continue to say we're only including what we actually have on the books, that number is sixteen, because we added two in public works. Lakisha was going to get us the date that that was approved, it's in the notes, but sixteen employees. I just wanted to make sure that we made clarification of that. So anyway, without further ado, I guess the hope that we have for today is that we could take a stroll through these policies. We've tried to go back wherever there were existing policies and put them in one place so we could vote them up or down. I don't know that we're gonna get through this whole document today, but if we do.
Our homework assignment was to go through the budget and cover the things we want to discuss. That was our homework. We don't have reading minutes, we don't have an agenda, and now we're thinking an hour and fifteen minutes, we're gonna talk about policies and documents we're just being handed, the waste contract, League of City financing, and lastly, coding building. Nothing is going to get done. I did my homework. That is what I'm prepared to do today.
So, thank you for your comment, and I think we can do whatever the pleasure is of the group, but the primary thrust of all of our conversation at the last meeting was that we have to get a framework in place in order to get a capital plan, which is required by the Florida statutes, and in addition, we need to provide a mechanism to keep you all out of conflicts, and I think both are important, cuts and policy, both are important. Please.
So as I look at this, first thing, the roadway classification, this is an ordinance that I believe has been voted on already, so if it's a policy that's already in place by virtue of the fact that it's been voted on, I'm not so the right way to say this. I had this conversation earlier with someone. So it seems to me that we actually have a lot of the policies that you're discussing already in place. It just seems to me that we have no teeth. And what I mean by that, I'm not gonna use these policies as an example, I'm gonna use something that happened to me just the other day. Okay, so just the other day, my truck was driving on the canal side of the road, and a landscaping truck coming the other way came barreling down the road and took the mirror off my truck. And it passed not one, but leaving the place where it was getting its plants, I guess, it passed not one, but two signs that say canal side has right of way. The police were called, and they came. They did not put anywhere on the police report that my vehicle had the right of way, and that therefore that person should pay for my mirror. Now, I'm not worried about my two hundred and fifty-dollar mirror, okay, I've got two hundred and fifty dollars, I'm not worried about that. My point is that if our police force, we pay six hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, is unwilling to indicate that we have signs and we have laws that need to be followed, then there is no teeth in that, okay? There's no teeth in that. That gives permission to landscaping trucks, dump trucks, anybody who's coming in and out of our town and driving through our town, to not obey the rules of our town. Okay, now, most of the people who live in the town very readily pull over and follow the rules. These are outside people, and we have no teeth, we have nothing. And it's the same with these things. We have these ordinances that have been voted on, we have policies that are in place, they get violated all the time. And nothing is done about it. It's not, it's not stopped in the process of when it happens. It's not, there's no teeth, there's nothing. We have people who clear-cut their property on a Saturday, there's no teeth, there's nothing. There's, there's no consequences for doing things wrong or doing things right in this town.
This is a budget workshop.
Well, I'm just addressing.
Let's stick to the budget.
So. Okay, so however we spend the workshop, let me at least do you all the pleasure or service or whatever of walking you through this document and what's in here, whether we talk about it today or not. Chair Kane, what?
And, and because what is, does this have anything to do with the number?
Yes, it all has to do with the numbers in the budget. So I, if, whether we're going through this document here tonight, or you're taking it home, or we're never looking at it again, just give me five minutes to tell you what's in it. Okay, time is, it's six fourteen, at six twenty, give me the extra minute. Well, we'll be done with talking about this, and you decide what you want to do, okay? They did. I cut and paste an image, I mentioned that in a meeting right before here. I did not have this in its original form, so I had to take it as an image from a PDF document, and I'm aware of that. So that was just a cut and paste, and it is my understanding that, and I think you all recall, that there was some discussion beyond what was on here, that needs to be considered as well. So I just put it here as reference while we go through. The project prioritization section is the one that we had a lot of the conversation about in terms of how we decide which projects show up as priorities and hopefully get funded out of the limited resources we have versus the projects that will have to wait their turn for funding. What we were hoping, and I say we, I mean the staff, what we were hoping is that we could get through the project priorities, and this group would say whether these priorities make sense or not, or there's some missing, or there's some here that we don't care about, and that staff would come back and come up with a ranking system, and we would take the projects and run them through this, so that when things came up, there would already be the framework that allowed people to move forward without waiting to have to come back and get a vote, and in particular, where there are conflicts, avoid those conflicts. That's what we were hoping to get through today, truly. Page two is what we were hoping to get through from this. The rest of this document is an aggregation of existing policies that have been put on the books either by the town or by the district. And we need to, at some point, if it's not now, that's fine, but at some point we need to go through and do what we've been talking about for years, which is come up with the standards so that we can come up with a master plan, and included further in here is the policy, actually, and its procedures on the books for the existing cost sharing, where we need to make a couple of decisions, and we also put the funding mechanisms in that are in other policies, and the maintenance standards that were in the district policies. There are a couple of policies that I could not actually find that would be relevant to some of the grants that we might want to seek this year after we get the budget done, and they have to do with canal restoration and culverts. So that is the brief, the briefest possible walk-through this document, which does not have to be completely addressed here tonight. We simply wanted to go through page two and get input on what the prioritization criteria would be, so we could come back with some type of set of rules and scoring that were discussed that we need, and that way we can end up building a capital plan. And we will need a capital plan to meet, one, the statutory compliance, and two, to proceed with any borrowing program, three, to develop an assessment program, and four, number of the grants are gonna require us to present, you know, that we have something in a capital program before we apply for the grant. So, so that is just a follow-up, and we can do this or not do this. I would recommend we try to do it, if not today, we schedule a meeting to do it. And then, of course, we can go to, you know, everybody's ideas for cuts and ads. And one thing I would tell you, I think we need to look a whole lot more towards ads and changing some of the things that we do and don't do to get where hopefully we are able to take the community in the future. So, if you want to do the walkthrough on the prioritization, we can do that now, or if you want to go right into your cuts, maybe we should start throwing them up there on the board, and if you guys don't want to do it, I'll go up and be a scribe. Okay. Thank you for allowing me my time, and I'd like to point out, I did take five minutes, even with my long intro, inter thing, introduction.
Well, new revenues are gonna be our percentage of take on the permitting fees on the building official, that's, that's something new. Our ten percent on the contract for the.
It's building and permitting, technically.
A formalized, structured BTR policy. So again, this is something that just needs to be flushed. Yeah, I'm not sure how to put this so it's clear, but I had an idea based on what happened to me the other day, which is, we have an inordinate amount of people doing business in our town and bringing trucks and things that are very damaging to our roads and in and out of our town, so I don't know if there can be some kind of a impact fee based on when people have increased renters, or somehow, I know we did road studies, so how would I put that to make it clear that I'm looking for some kind of like impact fees? Is that, is that the best? Okay, some kind of an impact, you know, if you have four hundred nursery trucks going in and out a day, if you have four hundred horse trailers going in, I'm not doing it. I'm not saying we've got like some big barns now with a lot of business coming in and out, and I think that we need to.
Put impact fees and then put traffic.
Traffic, okay. Yeah, some kind of a user, you know.
It's called a mobility.
Mobility what?
A mobility fee.
Mobility fee. And I would think we have the information from the, or some of it to start from the studies. Anything else of generating revenue?
I do. So Palm Beach County does a thirteen percent bed tax, which I think a lot of people whether they collect it or not, but I think we should add two percent on that, make it fifteen. So if we have to collect bed tax for the county, why not start with two percent towards the town?
Is that?
I don't think that's, I don't think we have that jurisdiction to assess a tax at that level.
But can't we assess on renters?
We can, we can do a.
We can do a renter registration or rental.
I'm pretty sure. Why can't our town?
We can do the equivalent in a rental registration.
And then resale. Resale and to.
What does that mean?
Home resales. I mean, people bought five acres for seventy-eight thousand dollars, and now they're selling them for six hundred, and it's increasing our taxes. Our taxes are not increasing because of commercial. Our taxes are increasing because of home sales.
But how can we get money from the fact that somebody prudently bought property and then resold it? I don't understand.
We're getting it in our revenue, in our tax base.
Oh, you're talking about the increase in ad valorem valuation for the town just by general revenue increase.
Well, it's not gonna continue happening naturally if we don't keep maintaining our account. So I don't know how they would go hand in hand, but.
Anybody have anything else for increase or revenue?
Well, one of, one of the new revenues, Jamie, would that be a new revenue, the AR?
The ARPA funds.
Yeah, the ARPA funds, I mean, it's a.
We are in.
Over the next several years.
We're in line to receive ARPA funds from the state and federal government at a proportion that's already been defined, however, the rules and the plan and, and a lot of the caveats.
We need to vote on to generate.
No, that, that will be coming to us if we qualify by default.
Okay, but that's not something council needs to consider, it's just gonna happen.
It's gonna happen, yes.
Well, we need to take action for it to happen, it's not gonna happen by itself. Apply for it and.
Application, I'll put.
But what they're doing is just sending the money in your bank account first.
I like that.
And then, as you spend it, you tell them what you spent it on, so it's gonna be backwards of the FEMA reimbursement program.
I want to go back to two things that are up there, because two council people mentioned things that are tied together. BTR and tax base. Our BTRs, and I could give you a long story or a short one, so I'm gonna go short. And that is that we have never had BTRs for the last three years on every business. There are six hundred businesses here. Of those six hundred businesses, a number of them are non-conforming zoning, meaning that we need to look at some type of legacy zoning for them that would allow the property tax appraiser to consider increasing the value of the property or lifting any homestead exemptions or other exemptions that are on them.
Well, I think that Laura hit the nail on the head, which is that personally, is that a structured thing, I mean, like, you know, is renting stalls out something that you need a BTR for is, is.
Well, though, that is true, but it's a combination of the BTR and the tax base, because the BTRs that, the way the BTR program works, the BTR are supposed to be assigned based on the industry code, the FAICS. The county assigns BTRs based on FI. Yeah, yeah, that's terrific like that, because I think that that really will change our tax base, believe it or not.
Okay, shall we go over to that side now?
No, so low impact, commercial ag-related businesses.
Commercial slash. Slash. Did I spell businesses?
Yeah.
Thank you.
The Dade property is now commercial property on the tax roll for the first time.
Oh, that's good.
They lost their, all their exemptions.
You know what, in the, in the, in the real estate flex, it says they paid three million and two for it. In Palm Beach County Appraiser, it says they paid a million. So I'm looking into that, and I found somebody else that, kind of, they're holding the note, just because somebody's holding. Just because somebody's holding the note for you, that doesn't mean you pay taxes on what your cash down was. So that's.
All the fails.
Um, but, and then I wanted to say code enforcement. Let's get code enforcement to go out and code enforcement and then stormwater drainage. So before.
We have something about the building department. This is also cost recovery to go here.
And stormwater drainage, like the churches don't pay any taxes, but they could pay the stormwater drainage through the water district taxes.
They do.
Yeah, but we're not charging people, I don't believe, for stormwater. Are we, Jamie?
No.
We don't have a stormwater specific utility or district separate from the water and road drainage.
It's all in the water control district.
Yeah.
Okay, so being that we're hopefully going to put in drainage, um, wouldn't that all be connective connectivity with our stormwater drainage? And can we put a tax on that?
Just be increasing the, the district assessment or whatever you want to call it.
But it would only be, well, I'm thinking more of commercial business.
Well, stormwater is specifically, but they all pay, everybody pays the $250 an acre. It's already, so the stormwater is listed or it was when it was the district. And I assume it was just carried over. The stormwater drainage is listed as one of the functions of that assessment. It's already, it's already listed.
Yeah, that's built into the $200 an acre assessment for drainage and stormwater.
And I wonder if that changes or being that everybody's.
But I think you're referring to a, a possible taxable line item that was initiated as a placeholder, right Francine? In the past for stormwater, wasn't that brought up as a placeholder for a future tax?
Yes, it was.
The district may get dissolved maybe, so the town would now need to have a way to collect those.
There's a different way to do stormwater. You can do a stormwater utility and have a stormwater utility assessment fee. So it is an option to look at in case, you know.
And would that be mostly on like the commercial roadways?
No, it would be on everybody. We would have to change the way that the, there's state law on how to create a stormwater utility. And so we would go through, and by the way, Elizabeth, if you want to share, that would be great because I'm staying super simple here.
Super simple is good right now.
Yeah, so we would have to just go through the process mandated by state law that allows us to enact a stormwater utility to create one and then to enact the related fee. So it's a question of whether we do better with a stormwater utility or whether we do better maintaining the district assessments. And in this document that I gave you all, I referenced to a memo written on May, in, in March 2018 by Mary Viator that explains how the district assessment can be used. So it may be more powerful than a stormwater fee, but we can evaluate that. Was that good, simple? Yeah.
No, but I wanted to go back to the BTR policy. Only because when I've talked to several people, some people feel that our BTR policy is not a fair fee structure. Because when they pay $34 or $43 for their BTR for the county and then they have to pay $200 with us, that may be why we're not getting part of the BTR fees is because they feel that they're outrageous if they can get one from the county and they've had one from the county, but now our BTR, just because they live in Loxahatchee Grove, is a lot higher.
So one of the things that we haven't talked about in public yet because it's not done is a significant analysis that we've been doing against the county and a number of other different databases, including the state of Florida, including the Florida Agricultural and Consumer Services and so on and so forth. We've been taking all of those databases and putting them all together. And we do believe, and don't forget, the, the BTR was put in, if I understand it correctly, fairly quickly. And it basically took the Royal Palm Beach Ordinance and made it ours. The Royal Palm Beach Ordinance does not fit the community characteristics. And so what we are looking at doing is using the county codes that the county has and going back and revisiting how our BTR is structured. Now to the second piece of your comment. The, we, we are no different than any city that we have our, our town, that we have our own business tax receipt. The county will have one and we will have one. And I believe that, you know, we've received some stuff from residents about how the county could do all this for us. The county will not even see if we have a BTR requirement on renewing businesses. The county is not going to be a solution for collecting BTRs. They will though, check with us on their, on, on whether on a new application if we've offered a BTR. So we have been putting a lot of time into that structure and plan to bring it forward.
I have a question regarding BTRs. So is that on, say, inventory or yearly income?
Well, that's a great question because it's on different things.
Well, if you're at the Publix.
If you're at the Publix, Publix actually has, I think, nine activities that qualify for business tax receipt. Like they have a check cashing service. It's not on inventory, but the store retails, the retail sales are on the inventory. If they.
Would it be on inventory?
Nursery should be on inventory, but you know. All of our reporting on inventory is on an honor system, you know? And I don't think we're different than anybody else on that either.
Laura, can you help me remember something? So one of the things that we encountered at the water control district was that there are several nurseries that back pump out of the canals to irrigate themselves. And that only like one or two of them were permitted to do it. And towards the end there, we were trying to rectify that. So that would also.
Yes.
They should have to pay.
That needs to be there. Yeah. Yeah. Just so you know, we have done a start at an inventory of who's, you know.
Well, there were like, we had identified somewhere, I think between 20 and 30, and that was just on a first run.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Two of them had permits.
Yeah, yeah.
So whatever they're pumping back out, yeah.
Read the flow meter and report the number.
Flow meters, okay.
Flow meters, yeah, at the owner's expense.
Well, what's interesting is South Water Water Management issues these permits and the town is not even in the loop. I mean, we just, we get notified that, hey, by the way, I just got an email. They just issued one for an additional three inch pump with so many million gallons.
That was part of the problem that we were trying to get. You can't issue those without us.
Yeah, they're doing it. I know Larry has a spreadsheet on all the, the straws and all the permits and. And it's a long-term permit when South Water Water Management does it, I want to say.
Yeah, it's like a 20 or 25 year. Excuse me, one second for housekeeping. We are streaming this meeting and it's closed captioning. And if you're not near a mic or you're talking at the same time, then it is not picking it up in the captioning. So I'll bring Anita a mic.
Did I spell that right?
Jamie, are they, apparently Kevin is still doing our permits because thank God the building department was here, the new building department, gentlemen. And we had a pretty upset electrical contractor who Keshavar was insisting that they need the homeowner to sign when the contractor was in for the permit.
We'll have to change our policy because our policy requires an agent consent form. And once we have the Safe Built folks here and they have changed our policies, we will be able to streamline. That is the whole reason to bring them so that we have an improved process done by a building official. And all we need is the agent consent form.
That's pretty standard. Who fills out the permits and, and does the legwork for the property? It could be the property owner, it can be the owner agent, it can be the contractor. But that's, that's the way the system works.
Okay, I wrote Keshavar's for Phyllis. I put mine down while I'm here, which is the Loxahatchee Grove Police Force that I don't believe we need. Council salaries, Laura, remember the days of $50 a month to be a water control district supervisor? So that is $55,000 right there, council salaries. And then also another thing that we've done in the past, both in the town as well as in the district, is to charge staff with finding a certain amount. So I'm suggesting that we tell staff to go back to their budget and find $150,000 to get rid of so that we're not over budget for the next year. Social media people, okay? Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to add a couple of numbers on the Keshavar thing, just for fun.
Okay, go ahead. What do you mean numbers? Like, like just in the parentheses to go with this?
You know, and again, it's just for awareness. And I realize we're coming to the end, lastly, end of Keshavar's involvement in permitting. From February of '21 to April 23 of 2021.
So that's one month, one and a half, two, almost two months. Okay, two months.
$64,000. Says, nope, says permit process, permit intake, permit intake and processing, permit setup.
I mean, that could have been some caught up invoices. I don't know, but I'm just.
It, it's very clearly broken out what projects were cost recovery, what costs were assigned to various projects. And again, this is not new news. Personally, I think Keshavar should be only used for any project that is paying cost recovery. Other than that, new engineers.
Only cost recovery.
Yeah, like Phyllis is saying, new eyes, you know, get some. Keshavar's is the Tesla of engineering. We can't afford it.
Can somebody give me, that's how I feel about the police force. Can somebody give me a number for the social media people?
Last time I saw.
Yeah, we've spent about $13,000. It's not just social media. They've been dealing, they've been.
Well, I mean, Phyllis is suggesting the cuts, so I'm just looking, I'm putting numbers next to all the cuts, so. 13K.
Spent about 13 this year in content production for web and social media.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any more cuts to suggest? Bruce, you're the cutting.
Check.
No?
Yes.
Okay, Laura, go ahead. Laura, Laura spoke first.
And I realize that staff is working with Coastal on this. You know, it, we've been promised X, it hasn't happened. So either we need to change the expectation of X or, and I guess that's why we're sitting here.
I put coastal restructure over there. I did speak to Coastal earlier today, actually, about the possibility of trying to reduce it at least to where we're not, the town's not subsidizing people's trash. And one thing that we came up with in that, I mean, I will go into this detail. It was a possibly restructuring the recycling, which would significantly reduce not only wear and tear on our roads, but also the cost of our contracts. So when we go into that, I'll, I'll share with you the details of what was said to me.
So in that case, put coastal, cut veg and recycling.
Okay.
No, over there.
Well, it's over here in restructuring, so I'm going to just add.
They probably need restructured too, so.
I'm just going to put veg there, okay.
Well, no, I don't want to restructure it. I want to take it away from them.
Well, I think you have to have solid waste. I'm pretty sure we have to have that.
But I think it needs to be a cut.
One thing I want to.
Go ahead, Robert, what do you got?
I want to emphasize, I want to turn back the clock one year when council approved $150,000 line item for engineering in the district budget. And I fought it then, but it got approved. When you approve a line item, you are giving the town manager the authorization to spend that $150,000 on engineering. So when you look at a $60,000 thing and you say, wow, that's crazy, where'd that money come from? Well, it was already an approved line item from council, so it was sitting there to be spent.
So are you suggesting I put 150K approved next to here as well, just to put it in perspective?
This year, I think in the budget, it's 50,000, if I remember right, when I went through it. But last year, I remember it was 150,000 line item. So my point is, you need to look at these line items and see, you know, this is, this is staff's wish list here for the admin and.
Do you have some cuts, Robert, some?
Oh, yeah, lobbyists, $75,000 for lobbyist is, I, I could see having some money in there for a lobbyist, but not that much. Well, that, I don't want to go there, just, we're looking to the future.
Absolutely, let's go there. We have a million, over a million dollar TPA grant that's going to change the face of Okeechobee Boulevard and bring our town into the future and hopefully keep Okeechobee from becoming Four Lanes. Although I know you've heard it's a million dollar horse trail, it is not. There is a lot more. It's about roundabouts. It's about all of that. And our lobbyists work very hard and we've been trying to get connectivity in our town, not destroy it and make a highway for Westlake.
Let's at least look at not paying for them.
Anybody else?
They get us audiences with, with people and with folks that can get us money that we would not get just walking into a room.
Well, and you have trouble with the, the government.
Well, I think. I think right now we're just getting ideas down. So I think everybody's, again, everybody's ideas should be entertained. And then this is something for further, we'll discuss each thing for further discussion. But right now, there's no such thing as a bad idea. So if anybody else wants to. Throw it out.
I would say remove the Public Works Engineering.
Do you have a number for the?
That's $100,000 to my knowledge.
Who is that? Oh, the Director of Public Works?
Yeah, and we could just hire somebody or when we hire the.
I just point out that you've collectively just hypothetically eliminated the town engineer by contract and the only civil engineer in the town, which is the Public Works Director. The town needs to have an engineer of record, one way or the other.
Okay, well, again, these are just ideas so that when we discuss it further, that can be. It's just everybody, let's, let's entertain everybody's ideas, so. Okay, well, and, and I do know in, in defense of that, we had a, we had an engineer who was the Director of Public Works previously when it. who was the director of public works previously when it was the water control district, and he refused to use his engineering capabilities on behalf of the town. He said to me many times, we weren't paying him enough to use his engineering capabilities. So I'm not sure legally how all that worked out, but I know that Mary Vitor was very aware that he was adamant that he wasn't getting paid to be an engineer. So I don't know whether.
Yeah, I think you have that same possible scenario here.
Yeah, I I'm not sure how that works. So anyhow, it's a, it's a bigger issue than who wants what. Robert, did you have another? You look like you have more things to say.
The regular salaries for the town manager, we had four and sixty thousand budget this year. They're asking for a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar, a twenty-five percent increase.
I need to interrupt.
I would say no.
I need to interrupt. I mentioned at the, and I apologize, but I mentioned at the very beginning of the meeting that that's an error. So the total amount between public works and the town manager's department needs to be, you know, reallocated.
Let me rephrase that. Let me say, right now, I believe we have the proper amount of staff that we need in both public works and town hall to run this town.
So staff, staff moratorium at sixteen, staff freeze at sixteen, okay?
Okay. There's no request for additional staff. We are only funding the positions that are currently here. And I did have the numbers misallocated because I had public work staff in town hall. I'm reallocating them now.
And I have no problem with a staff increase, you know, a five percent or six percent or whatever, cost of living pay raises.
For the existing.
You know, I'm not against that whatsoever.
You want to freeze the number at sixteen?
If they haven't had any in a few years. And I don't, I'm not privy, I haven't asked the bill.
Robert, can I ask you, do you have a, when you say the staff freeze at sixteen, do you have a certain amount in public works and a certain amount in the hall? Did you want to break that down further or just how it is right now?
I think how it is right now.
Okay. And just to be clear, there were some positions that you guys voted on that funded that were not filled. Does that include that there are sixteen?
They're all filled now.
They're all filled now. Okay, all right. Anybody else have anything else to add? Laura, you, Laura, you had a whole thing of notes and numbers. Did they already get covered?
I do apologize for that mistake. And that's why I say I have to continue vetting all these numbers.
Okay, is that, that's it? Is the list complete?
What's in your books, um, publications and subscriptions? Is that also, um, software?
Well, it includes a variety of things. In some cases, it is that, but, but, but for instance, we have subscriptions to different organizations that continue to provide us professional literature. And I think we might have our memberships in that line item as well. So I can get you the big detail of all of it if you'd like.
Because it's kind of climbed up and now it's six thousand dollars if I'm reading that correctly.
In which department are you looking?
Budget workshop vision, version one. Their, um, for some of the town manager.
Okay.
Mr. Thompson came and gave a demonstration.
No, no, if it's, he did, but that, that, that's not in books. I'll get you the detail for what's in there, but I do believe it includes memberships. And I think you'll see the League of Cities memberships and the chamber memberships and that type of stuff in there.
That's why we get the books.
Anything else before I sit down?
Um.
You don't mean to take that to make it like hard.
You can say it anyhow.
Um, I, I think it may not be working with the way we're doing the vegetation at the moment and their purchasing, no, not the coastal vegetation, uh, spraying.
You mean, is it, who is it now?
I have no idea who it is, if the thing's up.
It's AVCI. You're talking about the, the canal vegetation control.
We need to reevaluate that. You guys have been driving around in a golf cart and they are not keeping up. So I would like to, we were going to bring the first company back after six months and see how they did. I would like to bring it back and maybe give this other company a chance.
So canal vegetation is that one?
Not keeping up. So, Jamie, I don't want to cut it completely because last time I complained about it, then all of a sudden we didn't have it for a year.
One hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar contract or thirty-six thousand dollar contract?
I'm sorry, say that again?
How much would be amount of that contract? Was it thirty-six thousand or thirty-eight thousand?
It's in the budget here.
But we pay for all the, the chemicals.
Yeah, let me find the line item for you.
I'll have to pull it up and get them the details because there's more in there besides that.
So would that go more under restructure because we need it, do you think?
Possibly, it needs to be both.
Well, you wouldn't cut it.
I, I do want to point out something which might be helpful to both Phyllis and Mary Ann on this topic. Both companies that bid, bid at the end of the day, the same amount, and both of those amounts were piggybacked off a South Florida water management contract, meaning, meaning either company would be the same cost at this point in time if they were here. So Phyllis, you're talking about performance of company versus cost of company.
First company offered us more employees, that it wasn't just one guy in a truck. So, and they were very specific that were, they were not going to overspray. So I'm finding there's a lot of overspray and there's a lot of vegetation.
I just, I'm trying to point out the difference between cost of service and service quality and performance. If you're not happy with the performance of a particular item, then that can be addressed in one way. If you're not happy with the cost of it, it may, may or may not change based on what the scope of work is and how you bid it out and who responds and what they offer up and what council approves in that, in that context.
And I think we asked them before and the die-off rate of this stuff, they couldn't go too fast because it would cause an issue with the water in the canal. So they had to take a certain amount of time to spray, let it die, let it get floating or disintegrating to the bottom. But I, if they're making, it's, it's growing back. So, and the bad thing is spend, spending the money on, I just don't think they have enough.
Okay, is, are we done with the list? So then we can start going through the items?
I think that the evening goes on.
Okay, I'll keep my pen handy. Oh.
I don't know if it would be considered necessarily new revenue, but the money from the thingamadigger when it gets sold, that would be, um, something coming in.
Well, that's suggest, sell thingamadigger.
Carry up an auction.
Sell excavator.
We'll have a price on that for tomorrow night's meeting. I think the auction closes at five.
And also, about scrap the junk down there, all the things that are not of use.
It's like a junkyard.
Why don't you put it up for sale if he wants to have you people to do it?
Well, it's like old broken down trucks that they've taken all the parts off of. I don't know. Can we do that, Jamie? Can we put our junk up there?
Well, if you call it junk, you might not get very much for it, but there are.
You call it surplus equipment.
What I'm, what I put on my no list, which would be over on that one, is assets on sale and revenue from assets on sale. So if you had equipment or things that you wanted to liquidate, then you could put those either on online auctions or.
That one's already done.
For sale and realize some level of revenue from that.
So I'll call it surplus equipment instead of junk.
Equipment, revenues or proceeds.
So I have a conundrum. Um, what about the building? Because we're trying to find revenues, we're trying to cut things, but we have a building in serious repair at the Water District.
When you say building, you mean the property, correct? Or because?
The, the building, the big house. The garage was like, uh, declared unsound like ten years ago.
That's not, that's not a revenue.
Yeah, that's not a revenue. Yeah, it's not a cut. So it's not, it doesn't get to go up there.
I do think that after we do this, we have to identify the projects and programs you want to include in the budget.
Absolutely.
What about a new revenue? What about the liquor sales? Are we getting?
No, are you going to sell liquor?
Well, the old boonies is supposed to be reopening, but are we getting, you know, similar to the BTRs, are we getting, what we're able to get as a town?
That goes through the state and they send a report.
They pay the state for their alcohol and beverage, and then we get the revenue. So we get a report that states who's in your town and what revenue are you getting from their alcohol and beverage licenses?
And we don't think that we're collecting the full amount. I've had Cheryl call them repeatedly to try to go ahead and get, you know, a full accounting for it. And we also, I also had Bev do same and send information of people that we know are selling alcohol to try to get that. So I think that's a great idea because I think we've got a few thousand and every thousand counts.
Yes.
What about like seven eleven in Publix?
Seven eleven in Publix actually have been paying, but I, I don't believe that we've got everybody paying.
And you have to research it because with an address like Loxahatchee, sometimes they give you, give other people your stuff.
That's where, I think that's where we're losing a lot. And that may be, that may be a, a line item is ensure Loxahatchee Groves is segregated from Loxahatchee.
Alcohol license revenues.
So let's talk about that. Can we have our own zip code to stop that?
In a short answer, no. I've been through that fight for decades. You need an act of Congress and a blessing from the Pope.
We're also supposed to get two dollars for every ticket that's written in Loxahatchee Groves from the sheriff's office, and we don't get it because they put Loxahatchee, not Loxahatchee Groves.
But that's because we don't have a citation book. And when we have a citation book, that supposedly would.
We pay six hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year and we don't have a citation book?
I've had that conversation with them.
Now, we have to come up with our ordinances and the tickets like we talked about for two years now, the ticket book. You know, it's up to us.
Okay, so let's put it on here. Because, uh, what should I call it?
Ticket book.
Ticket book?
Citation revenues.
Citation revenue sounds way more official. Hold on a second.
Does boonies have a certain hours of operation?
We just had to sign. I'm going to defer to Mr. Tidcombe because we just had a sign.
Because don't we have the, the ordinance up that says they can't sell alcohol after eleven o'clock at night? Or the, um?
That's apples and oranges.
Seven eleven? Yes. And does that apply or that's different?
I will have to research that specifically on that location to see if it applies or not. The.
It's a different liquor, it's a different liquor license. It does, it does not apply.
The, the status of boonies is they're in application, both for their construction permits and their liquor license. Those two elements are tracking parallel through the, the systems. So stay tuned on that when they get up and running.
I thought they already had a liquor license. They purchased the old owner's liquor license.
No.
Liquor license has to be transferred from owner to owner. Just because you buy my place and I had it, that doesn't mean you have it.
You have to.
Right, but they purchased it from him and now it's being transferred.
I have to sell you my liquor license.
The old liquor license was foreclosed on. There's a new liquor license in application to the state.
And so how that works is, only because I did it at Sewell's Point, how it works is, just like BTRs, they send everybody, this is what you owe for your alcohol and beverage license. So you have to send it into the state and they give you a certain amount of time, just like BTRs. If you don't pay it here, you get a fine, you got to pay this. And once they collect it, then they distribute it to the municipality. But I think, again, where I issue, and we had the same thing because of Sewell's Point, it has the same address, zip code as Stewart. So the person is really supposed to look through it because they will give, because it has Stewart, Florida, they're not saying if it's in your limits or not. So it's really up to a person to look at it every time it comes in to make sure that the businesses that you know are in your municipality, your borders. And you have to notify the, uh, alcohol beverage state department because the county is not going to notify them and the city that's getting the money is not going to notify them that they're not in their city.
They're not sharing.
Can they have a five a.m. license? So if they have, I don't know if we could stop them from having a five a.m., but can we tax them, say, after two o'clock to have a late, you know, I mean, it's a res, there's residence behind there.
What does that have to do with taxing?
Well, first of all, Karen, we agree that the five a.m.
Yeah, that's.
To state two or.
I would just suggest this as a topic that staff and the attorney are going to have to look at our ordinances, look at their particular licenses, et cetera, and see where they fit in that equation. It's not an easy answer to say, yeah, we can make them do this or that. We have to look at what the law says.
I don't think they're open all night, are they? Were they?
Oh, yeah, they were until five in the morning.
Well, I understand when they first came in from the county, they used to have a five a.m. license, um, through the county. And I believe that ported into Loxahatchee Groves as a legal pre-existing condition, if you will, when they came into the incorporated town and they ran on that premise for a very long time. They are rebuilding and reapplying. So that may be resetting the ground rules for their permissions.
And that process doesn't come before council.
No, it, you don't.
You approve that as the town manager, right? The license?
No, the state, that's a state application. I just approve that they can apply for it in the town, that they've met whatever requirements to, to apply, to verify that they actually are a legitimate applicant.
But as far as the hours, though, it has to be on the application, doesn't it?
Their hours have to be compatible with our ordinances.
So do our new commercial ordinances, being that they're not really the original owners and they're not really the old boonies, it's just keeping the names, to my knowledge, because they're trying to revise the liquor license. Can we change the hours of operation?
Again, I think this is a technical legal issue that I would want to review with the attorney before I give you a definitive answer. Because I do not know the answer, um, here tonight that I could tell you definitively one way or the other without reviewing the documentation. But I, we hear you that your concern is you don't want them to be open till five in the morning if that is a prohibitable requirement.
That was it. That's where all this conversation went to, is, you know.
Right, they're really two different aspects.
I wanted to make sure that, you know, if they're open until twelve, one, two o'clock, that they can do that on their liquor license and we're going to get the tax.
And the sheriff.
I don't care what time they open, what time they close, to be honest with you, because if we have problems with there with the sheriff, it's going to be addressed. You know, I don't want to say, okay, you can open from this time to this time. They're a restaurant, they need to thrive, they need to survive. Pay your tax, pay your dues, you're in Loxahatchee Groves and that's.
So to answer your question, Councilmember Miles, we just have to make sure that once they are approved and we get the report from the state that they're on there.
And is that your job to make sure that happens?
It's probably between Francine and I.
It's a collective process.
It's the town's responsibility to make sure that we're getting that revenue. And if we don't, then we take it.
Then we know there's something with either the citation or the application.
Where does that show up, Francine, in the budget with line item for revenue?
It has its own line item. And if you take a look at it, it's very minimal. It's in revenues. It's in the, um, fund one. And the account number on it, it says alcohol beverage license tax. It's the account name. Yes.
As we will, these are the old sheets.
I actually thought they were going to be numbered when they were turned into a PDF. My, I didn't, didn't do the final.
Where are you, Francine?
I'm in revenues and expenditures. I'm in revenues and expenditures by department, general fund. And if you turn one page in, you'll see revenues. And then you come two pages in and you'll see the detailed accounts that make up revenues. Alcoholic beverage license tax is about.
Where is it? Did you find it?
Yeah, it's all the way here at the end of the page, right here.
Wrong section. Where are you? This is freaking ridiculous.
Yeah, I think it is too. I absolutely do.
I just wanna see, how did it change with COVID? That's what I wanna see, is how it's changed. Should've had significant changes.
Actually, in fiscal year 19, which was our last audit year, we received under $1,000. Which is when we started the phone calls, because if you look, in fiscal year 18, we received $4,000. In COVID year, we got up to 1,500, and for this year, we budgeted the same 4,500, but we're only, we're collecting like nothing at this point in time. We have been calling the state back and forth trying to get the detailed information, including sending them a list of who we think needs alcohol and beverage tax license.
Also, if they don't pay, they don't send you your shares.
Page six.
The little pages?
Yes, absolutely. This was, this is the old package. There was a printing production issue where the page numbers did not get put on this package. If you wanna know how your package is struck.
It's the general fund. It's the general fund.
I guess big, big picture is, you know, we have several stores that sell liquor, and if Francine and, and/or the Keisha are the ones reviewing that, are they aware of all the stores that sell liquor? You know, the Shell Station, the AG, the other store. Yeah, so there's. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, Global Mart. So that, that's my question, maybe.
So what we do is.
That spreadsheet can be shared, maybe at least with council, the fact committee, hey, do you see anybody on here that isn't on here?
We have it. We have it. We've also sent it to the state. We've asked them to please confirm for us the payment of their license to the state. We have not gotten the cooperation that we believe we should have from the state, so we continue to work with them. And I also believe one of the things that we're doing with our code officers, because the way that you generally enforce an alcohol beverage tax license is through code enforcement. And, you know, we'll be able to shut places down. They have to pay the state, and I believe they pay the state, yeah. It's not, it's not.
It's, it doesn't go like that.
It has to do with the date of their license, so you don't get it every month in accounting. So let's say 7-Eleven, let's say they did theirs in April. In April, that's when we get their payment. So it's kinda like, you know, your anniversary date.
Yeah, yeah. And if you don't pay, if the, the place does not pay, the state does not give you your portion because they haven't paid it. So it could be low because a nu, a number of businesses out here have not paid their state alcohol license.
They can shut them down. They can withdraw their license. They have a lot of tools in their toolbox. Or just between COVID and just the sheer scale of all these kinds of things, they're challenged like everybody else. And, and, and there's a timeline to get to that place. As a revenue source, it's an annualized source, but what you see on these numbers is a big drop off, especially during the COVID period. But a lot of that probably converted to retail sales of liquor versus bar sales of liquor. And that will ultimately roll out from the after accounting that comes from the state.
So I just would point out that the revenues went down in 2018 to under $1,000. They came up to around $1,500 and now they're back down to almost nothing. We have been reaching out to them and sending a list to them and will continue to do so. Alcohol and beverage tax.
So our code enforcement responsibility is if you find somebody that doesn't have a license, then the state's responsibility is people that already have the license to collect, and if they don't collect eventually, withdraw the license or suspend it.
Uh huh. That's absolutely correct.
We get a spreadsheet, what, quarterly, and we have. Well, but the anniversary is different for each business, so when do we get the spreadsheet?
They, the state pays us monthly.
Okay.
The state pays us for whoever has an anniversary in the month.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'll get a remittance in the month that somebody had an anniversary, so we can tell you who we got remittances from.
So I guess you can look back four years, and then if there's people on there that we know sell liquor, that we never got a remittance for the past year, then that needs to be investigated.
Correct.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
If I may interrupt, part of why we came here tonight is to make a list. Things we wanna pursue, things we wanna cut. And I appreciate that we're here talking about the nitty and gritty of things, but if the group thinks it's a good idea, I just made a grid of the things on that wipeboard for cuts. I've picked my top three. Can we circulate it? And just put an X in the box so at least we can focus on something? Do we think that's a progressive start or not worth the effort?
I go top five.
Okay.
Well, there's nine of them up there.
I've, I've just picked my four.
Madam Attorney, do we need to initial and accept that matrix in as part of the record of the meeting?
Are the boxes marked so thereby they know who voted for what?
Okay, thank you. We'll put it on the record.
Okay.
Well, while you're doing that, I'm gonna excuse myself to the ladies' room. Everyone.
Anybody know what the heck is going on on Okeechobee with MJC? Because the legacy is showcase, the legacy is not. Are they mining the land back there? Does, and why doesn't the town?
We were told by the property. We were told by the property tax appraiser when we raised the issue of the property classification to stay tuned. And that after they finished their final review of the ag exemptions, we would see what happened. They were just that cryptic about it, so we need to go ahead and go and see how they've classified that property. Giving you some paper, ma'am.
Looks like somebody filled in a pond in the past. Then they, now they have to demuck the area because they're doing something else, so.
That particular property.
Because, because we don't have the overlay. They don't have to. They're doing ag. Do whatever they want under ag. Remember, there was cows there. They can't be mining.
I, I can answer your question.
Would you like an answer?
Okay.
Mining is selling the dirt, the rock.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought you meant they were mining, like digging a hole. It watered about.
So we have a number of properties in code enforcement on Okeechobee. Additionally, there are a number of them that have unpermitted activities, and they have not gotten, you know, the dreaded FDA or any of the other permits. The particular property that you bring up, Councilman, Councilmember Herzog, is one that we're working with their attorney on right now. They claimed all they were doing was putting a fence permit in, and because, you know, that's all they were doing, they didn't mean anything else because they're equestrians and they're bona fide ag. They're not bona fide ag. They may have applied, but they're not bona fide ag. They need the full, full approval before they do anything, so they've been told to cease and desist, and we're trying to get the whole thing resolved with. We have the same thing, we have the same thing. Well, that other property is digging too, Okilux. We have the same property on about six different sites on Okeechobee where they're doing the same, exact same thing. Some were working with the attorney, some were, have already been to the magistrate and are not coming into compliance.
Fines.
Fines and a lien on the property.
Ultimately, fine and foreclosure.
We have fines and we have liens. I'm going to the ladies' room.
I'm not, I have not reviewed that portion of the town code. It has not come up yet, but I can look at it.
Literally in the last two or three years, you've had very little in the way of code enforcement fine revenues because code enforcement was on moratorium, magistrate was on pause for. There are several properties that have fines accruing daily that will end up at the end of the system with either foreclosures or large amounts of fine that they will have to mitigate through the process. We don't get to arbitrarily just pull the money or, there's process, there's due process on all of it. And I would just further caution that code enforcement fines are intended for compliance with code and ordinances, not as a revenue source in of themselves. Yes, well, the, they're imposed by the magistrate. They're generally imposed by the magistrate. They are controlled by state statute. There, there's a lot of things that are controlled by state or statute or other systems that you literally have no control over, except that we fall within the parameters of those systems and we follow those rules. So as much as it would be nice to maybe accelerate some of these situations and either get revenues from them or, or force quote unquote somebody into compliance, that option is not always there as it, as easy as it sounds.
We are getting revenues in that they have to get their permits, their FDAs, their BTRs. You know, that's been a lot of the code enforcement thing, so. I paid four times my fee. Got an extra 180 something dollars out of me. But like, you know, my neighbor got the BTR letter for code enforcement and he had to pay like three times because it was three years or something, like 600 and something.
That was for three unpaid years. That, that's what.
But I mean, that is, code enforcement is generating that revenue.
Yes, we are, we are getting revenue from it.
Fine line item, you know, it's. Any business, resident, commercial, anything. Yeah, Publix has eight of them because they have eight different businesses within Publix, so. No, only if your business is run in the town. You don't have to pay one to do business in the town if your business is run in the town.
Unless you're some town.
If your business is located in the town at a town address, then you have to pay one. Yeah. You can do business in the town without one, but you can't own a property in the town and run your business.
Some, some cities, some municipalities have, where you can't, where if you're a contractor and you come in and do business, you have to pay.
Yeah, you have to register.
Yeah, register.
Man. Oh, I thought you said four.
Well, no, I just wanna talk about three. I'm gonna get three. So our town lobbyist, actually, I believe, you know, because they live in the town, that we get a huge discount. I mean, they're $5,000 a month. I think they do far more work than $5,000 a month. I know they do because they live here. So they care a little more than the average lobbyist that's just.
Where do they live?
They live off Raymond.
I do know that they live in Palm Beach.
No, I don't know that. They don't live on, maybe one of their relatives.
Jeff, Jeff did live in Palm Beach.
So.
I'm keeping four. It's obvious the fourth one. I mean, it's like.
Dad, now he has the big mansion on the corner, but are, are we gonna hold that against them? I mean, and they're very well connected and it benefits the town and.
Well, I'd like to see the last five years what they have actually produced.
Haven't been working for us the five years because our last management company, who we shall not speak of, you know, wouldn't tie their hands and wouldn't let them do anything.
Revenue pursuits, we're doing four, right?
Yes, whatever. The first year, we tried to get appropriations and we ended up with, did we get 40,000? Or we almost got there and the sheriff, no, the governor squashed everything just partly. Next year, it was COVID. So now we're finally getting up there. They're starting to get to know us. I mean, it's, it's like you gotta go through all these rooms, shake all these hands, and then finally you get around and hopefully they pass away.
How long have they, are we there only?
No, no, no. Forever.
A lot of big firms.
So why would you think that they're? Why would you say that they're just learning now?
No, I didn't say they're learning them. They're meeting us, Loxahatchee Groves. Not talking, and but we're, we are getting audience with senators and House of Representatives. That we, I don't, first of all, our last manager couldn't get us an audience with anybody. So I, and I went on that trip. So I think they're very beneficial to the town as far as trying to work with Palm Beach County, which is really important. Unless we're just gonna be the doormat or minto and.
I sat at a League of Cities luncheon and I said, this goes back probably two, two years ago. And I said, you know, we're hiring this lobbyist. We're a small town, small budget. You know, it seems like we're doing this just because the other towns do it. And everybody at that table, all the other cities, including the director of League of Cities, said, why would you hire a lobbyist? You have Jamie Titcomb as your town manager. He knows everybody in Tallahassee. He has all the connections. So connections, Phyllis, you talk, I'm talking. So nobody's saying this lobbyist isn't great at their particular focus, which is county. So nobody's saying this lobbyist isn't great at their particular focus, which is county and state government. There's so many grant opportunities that we're missing because it's not their focus. It's not their bailiwick. So I think what we talked about previously was a budget amount. And then you find the grant and you find the lobbyist that matches it. I just spoke to some lobbyists this past week up in Orlando. And the hourly fee in the contract is very, very high compared to what we pay engineers, planners, all the other professional services at the town, probably about twice as much. So they are very great, amazing, probably the best in the county at county communications, things like TPA, county stuff. They have all the connections, great connections at the county and state, but I understand that state appropriations come with a lot of rules, a lot of matching. Had we got any one of those state appropriations, the, all the money we just spent on paving would have been spent for that one little section of appropriations that we've got. So. I'm not saying that there's instances where we don't need a lobbyist, but to have one that is focused purely on county and state on contract all the time, I don't think does this town as good of a benefit as if you had a pot of money to distribute to different types of lobbyists like easements. You know, lobbyist job to get easements. That's one of the things they specialize in. You could contract out, hey, we want to go out petition these owners, try to get easements. And that's similar to what a lobbyist would do, you know, organize approach and assimilate the information and bring it back. So nobody's saying they're not amazing at their scope that they normally do every day, which is county and state, but there's so much more to it than that. And the one thing they got us, the roundabout, the Okeechobee Trail, the taxpayers don't support it.
They do support it, Robert.
No, they don't.
Well, when you lie to them and just call it a horse trail to get votes, no, I'm going to say it. You are, you have five, you're five council members, Robert, five of us, okay? You are mayor by ten.
What's your point?
Speak for us. I watch the ITV media.
What's your point?
My point is you don't make decisions for this council without speaking to us. We don't have a strong mayor in this town.
Do you think I shouldn't have spoke at ITID after we voted five zero?
We, we didn't vote. We had a consensus. We didn't vote. We had a consensus to send out a letter.
That's right. We voted five zero.
Excuse me, I just have something to say. Can I just interrupt? Can I interrupt? Yeah, can I interrupt this to just say something? So.
Well, somebody calls you a liar.
I, I'm sorry. I just want to say, okay, let's just stop, please. We're not children. Come on. I do this. I do children all day long. Let's stop. Okay? Um, so all I want to say is I can certainly understand the concern and I think I would consider some kind of a restructuring, like you said, Robert. But here's the thing. I've been doing this for a long time from back on the water control district to this, being involved in our town's government for like 12 years now. And I do know that without a focus and without a lobbyist and without a professional guiding us and moving us forward, we achieve nothing. And that once we got that, we have actually made some gains. They might not be gains that everybody's in agreement on. Okay, I'm not saying that, but I am saying I do think that there is a lot of room. I mean, I went on three trips to Tallahassee with, the first without lobbyists and the second two with lobbyists. And, and it made an enormous difference in our reception. It had made enormous difference in our outcomes. So I would hate to see us just throw the idea of having that kind of guidance. But I think it needs to be tempered with what we can afford. It's kind of like the same thing as, the same way I feel about the police service. Yeah, everybody wants to have a Mercedes, you know, like I want to have a two hundred thousand dollar Mercedes, but guess what? I can't afford one. So I might have to just drive my Honda. Okay? So, you know, we just can't afford it. So we just have to kind of be satisfied with the same police service that everybody else in Palm Beach County has. We, we can't have an enhanced police force, in my opinion. Obviously, I know everybody else doesn't share that opinion. But I feel the same way about the lobbyists. I don't want to throw, throw the baby out with the bathwater is I guess what I'm saying because I actually have experienced the difference in having that kind of direction and guidance. And I realize that Jamie is, you might say I'm, have a lot of knowledge of Jamie's past and background and history and, and how great he is, but he also has a lot else on his plate and we can't expect him to be our lobbyist as well. We just can't, we can't add that to his plate. Okay?
First of all, I, I feel that we don't spend money to possibly make money. We keep going around with more ideas and new revenues and things to add, things to cut. We haven't set up a game plan of where we want to go and what we want to do and three things that are top priority in this town. And then we say, okay, what money do we have now? What's it going to pay for? And how do we get more? And what do we have to cut, which is partially why we're here. But we haven't set up that we're going to do roads and X amount of dollars has to be gained for us to do the roads. We're going to do drainage. We need X amount of dollars from this budget to do drainage. Right, so we go.
That was next.
Yes, so now we've spent almost an hour and a half. Um, and the reason I would choose not to do the lobbyist is because sixty thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars can buy a lot of something for this year's budget. It's not set in stone that next year we can't change it because guess what? We're going to have a budget next year. And the year after that, and the year after that. The people in this town are crying because they want the roads done. They want this done. They want that done. They don't care that a lobbyist goes, spends our money, gets a grant that we have to put money into to use. If she went or any lobbyist went and said, okay, well, you know, we paid them fifteen thousand dollars and they got us fifty, a hundred thousand dollars. Great. That hasn't happened in three years. All we got is we got to match funds or we have to spend money that we're going to take out of somewhere else or not allocate it to somewhere else, the roads or drainage or whatever. And we're going to put a recreational trail down Okeechobee Boulevard, a road that we don't own. The county mayor may not come in and widen it whenever they want. But I am not for taking money out of a budget that we're trying so hard. These people behind me work so hard every day for us. And I want to pay a lobbyist to possibility get money? And a hurricane happens like did two years ago, the state goes up, I'm sorry. Your roads don't matter to us. We have people in Panama City, whole city's wiped out. People aren't in their homes yet. They're not giving them a lot of money. They're not going to give our little town roadway money. If it benefits them in the long haul because our little chunk of, um, four hundred and fifteen thousand? And what's the amount for, um, the, the initial one, seven hundred and some thousand that we have to do? There's four hundred and fifteen for the roundabout? And what's the other figure? Okay, the matching, whatever the, the. Okay.
And they're giving us over a million.
Okay, ours, our share is pittance compared to what they're going to spend. My point of that is they're throwing us a bone. I said it before, I'll say it again. They're spending almost two point five million dollars or two million dollars on a project that they want to have done. And when they do it and get our little piece of the pie, they may leave us alone for six, seven years. They may say, you know what? We can't leave you alone now. Gee, I'm sorry. You put your money in, but we need to do what we're going to do. If they said, oh, you know what? It's a little project and your cost is going to be this and our cost is going to be that. Okay. They don't do anything. No government entity does anything and puts that much money into it without getting what they want one way or another. And I'm not for spending the town's money because there's so much more that we need in this town. Um, if the trail didn't cost us anything, no matter what you want to call it, have at it. God bless it. I'm not for spending money.
So when did this town stop caring about our borders? When did this town stop fighting?
When did this town stop fighting the developers? Because that was before a lot of these folks were here. This started over four years ago and Ron Gerald was one of the champions. Okay, it was about connectivity. It was about slowing traffic. And it was from keeping our Okeechobee Boulevard from turning into a highway to Westlake. And by the way, we have Pulte's Homes knocking on our door right at Sea Road and they got a nice paved entrance. So that is what it's about. It's not about spending, oh, four hundred dollars, a, a four hundred thousand dollars on a horse trail. Where have you been? This has been going on for years. This is about roundabout. This is about family activity, making a main street. That's what it's about. And you guys want B road paved, so you want that four hundred and fifty and you want to squash and a, a program that's going to help be the future of this town and give something to this entire community. It's called connectivity. I didn't, I didn't fight. Bad choice of words. I made a stand. Phyllis, Phyllis, I made a stand. I, I made a stand when Forty-third Road North people came. I made a stand when other people were talking about that was being cut off. And some of the, the talk that went around was, well, the kids that are going to school there can go to Wellington. And they got cut off. There are still people today that it causes a grave inconvenience for them to go all the way around to go to the school that their kids have gone to. I fought for that. I'd rather see, I'd rather see us spend money to reopen that back up somehow, some way to the residents rather than spending money again, but everybody's opinion is different. We have to keep the money in the community.
No, me, I'm just going to say adjourn at eight o'clock.
All right, all right. Can I please, could we, so, so I'm not trying to say either of your, but wait, but, but that's the next portion, which is specific projects and what comes first. So you guys are arguing about something that is not even open for argument now. So why don't we finish what we're doing? If I might suggest, and then, because we have like fifteen minutes to get through this next list and finish what we're doing and have at least an outcome for these two lists before Robert does we're done. And then you can have all your passionate arguments about what projects deserve to be on the capital spending, but that's the next, it's the next step. I get it that you feel strongly about it and I get it that she does. And I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying either way. I'm just saying it's the next one. Yeah. Yep, it's the next one. Yeah, exactly. And so is, are the cuts. Francine, do you want, I'll give you these originals once they're organized and then do you, and then I guess would council vote on these tomorrow night? Or is this something you want us to come back with or how do you want to handle this?
I don't think there's anything for the budget tomorrow night on the agenda. It's certainly, you know. Um, I think that we need to take pictures of what we have up there and pull it all together.
And, and frankly, because that's just a discussion of where we want to head. I really, I don't want to vote on, on those as an item, me personally, if they came up at a council meeting without doing the rest of this budget and saying, well, we're going to cut this or we're going to add that. These meetings are discussions and when everything happens, then we as a council will decide. I don't, I don't want to vote on those now or tomorrow night. Not piecemeal this.
Now, this is just food for staff. This is a word. Yeah, no, no, we're not voting on anything tomorrow night. Yeah, no. Yeah, no, this is, this is stuff for staff to go back and reevaluate the budget. That was four.
So the cuts have been completed because I'm going to keep them. Okay, thank you.
Oh, I, we just, I put them in order. I didn't see the name at the bottom there.
Oh, Robert, you put in somebody else's blank.
I put it in the middle, I think.
Okay. Can I?
I don't think there should be names on it.
There has to be names on it.
Yes, that's public records rule.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yes.
Are you serious?
Yes.
Yeah, you're, you're essentially doing calculus on the vote to the decision-making. It's what, Robert, you just spent four days in these workshops about these topics. Every document, every action is part of the process.
Can I just share with you? Can I just share with you what the coastal, the conversation that I had earlier with the coastal man? Um, because it was significant. So there were two things that I wanted to explore before and come back. So I know you guys are obviously, and I don't want you to think I'm stepping on toes. This is obviously a council thing and I want you to be rest assured because Francine was in the meeting, as was Elizabeth, that I made sure that he, I made sure that he knew. I had some questions and so I asked.
Scheduled a meeting with the town attorney and staff?
No, sir. No, sir. That's not what happened at all.
We had a meeting scheduled with them for tomorrow night's meeting with council and because Chair Kane expressed a desire to look at recycling, I invited her to that meeting.
Right, it was an already scheduled meeting and I want you to be aware that at the beginning of the meeting, I made sure that that was understood that I did not represent the town, that I'm simply the volunteer who's the chair of the finance committee. So there was no toes stepping on. But I had some ideas about restructuring to try to redo. So right now we all know and for a memorable history that I know of, the town has supplemented the garbage contract. The town has had to pay. What we collect from the taxpayers is not enough to cover the contract. It hasn't been for any, as long as I can remember. Under Waste Pro, I believe we did. We subsidized.
There was subsidizing with.
We've been subsidizing forever. We subsidize coastal.
We did subsidize.
Correct. Yes.
This year we subsidized coastal. It was part of the budget.
We, again, so my statement is, we've been subsidizing the, the garbage contract for, since living history. So one of the things that you guys came up with was to go back to the twenty-five percent franchise rate for a commercial, which was a great move and which might look like it might make it a break even. But then I thought, well, what if we could even do better than that and maybe then reduce the cost to the taxpayer? So I went to him and I asked two specific questions. I asked him specifically if he would break out the costs of the vegetative debris, the recycling and the, um, tr- actual trash pickup. He, he would not. Um, he said he could not until, so that, that was basically the end of that conversation. Um, I then asked him if we could do some kind of a subscription rate with the vegetative debris because I know that I myself have never put not one tree out. I, I have a burn permit and I burn everything and I don't put any vegetation out. And we all kind of decided together that the, the. And we all kind of decided together that the the policing of that would make that impossible. Okay, so that kind of went by the wayside. But the third idea was a good one. That one was to do uh with the recycling, to possibly do, instead of having eight vehicle trips two a week, eight vehicle trips per month down our roads, so also would save on wear and tear on our roads, to have two locations that like two days a month had drop-offs, one on the south side of town, like either at the water control district, like the big dumpsters, which they would provide. And then another one, find a location on the north end of town where people could drop off their recycling and into, no, not their vegetation. Vegetation's like, there were, I found no solution for that, for the recycling. So basically, basically what he said is it would make a significant drop in our contract if we were to do that. If they came like two days a month, which is all they would need, based on the amount of recycling that we actually do in our town. I asked him how, what percentage of people participated? He said about twenty-five to thirty percent of the people in the town participate in recycling on a, on a weekly basis. On a, on a, um, and he quantified this. So he, he, his estimate was that about fifty percent of the people in town actually recycle, but only twenty-five to thirty percent put out every week, meaning that they might skip a week or whatever. So that it wouldn't probably be a huge inconvenience for people to take their bins to a big dumpster and drop it in. Um, so anyhow, it's just an idea. It's not like anything set in stone. Like I said, I was very clear that I didn't represent the town. I was just trying to find a way to shave some money. So I know you guys are going into that discussion tomorrow night, so I wanted to give you that food for thought. It can, can use the idea, don't use it. It's just, I wanted to clarify it because I know it's on your agenda for tomorrow night, what the discussion was. Okay?
I've already had those convers- exact same conversations with staff and emailed staff months ago. Same situation, trying to get a separate cost on each so we could evaluate a different service. Like Phyllis said, how can we do something different on vegetation? Well, how much are you going to peel out of that contract? And that's
And my concern also is putting it in a dumpster because we were talking about recycling. Putting something somewhere else is just too easy for somebody to say, oh, I missed my garbage pickup. So now I'm going to take whole garbage and I'm going to throw it in there.
Well, that's what we did say. It would have to be locked. That's why we said like the water control district yard where it's locked during the day and there's people there to watch to make sure. And then we'd have to find a location on the north end with the same parameter that it's a locked place, not, you're correct. Not a place that's open for dumping because that was an issue. And that was his issue with trying to do vegetation in a similar way. You know, he said like the community policies didn't work because then you've had like landscaping companies coming in and dumping huge amounts of stuff there.
I think you're going to find that if people have to go somewhere to remove their recycling, they're just going to put it in their regular trash and call it a day.
Yeah.
But Pulte County does go through all our trash. You know that, that they do recycle at the plant. It just doesn't get dumped out there. It goes through the conveyor and we should actually do that field check. But they, they recycle. They go through all our garbage.
Remember, everything's burned. So that is part of the recycle triangle. I talked extensively recycling booth up in Orlando this past week. And I was talking about the cost of materials and is it worth it from a, I know three years ago, we got this contract, talking to Solid Waste Authority, there was no market for it. It was costing them money to recycle. There was no place to sell it. But she did say the market in the last year has just skyrocketed. They are finding so many things to manufacture out of, you know, the plastics and stuff like that. So um she, yes, and she did volunteer to come do a presentation on that. Because I said, that's important, you know, sometime to do a presentation in front of the community, let them know there had, there is value in it, other than the BTUs. BTUs, she said BTUs are value. It's part of the recycling triangle. So
Maybe we look at getting, like we got the ninety-six gallon cans. Maybe we look at getting different recycling bins and the holding post will speak to the buyer and say, look, pick up the recycling if people are putting it out and you need to, are recycling, want to see recycling numbers, you know, increase.
I think it may be time to do a new RFP. Because I don't think we're going to get apples to apples on the credits. You know, it'd be great if we did, but when they won't even give you a number. Obviously, when they bid this contract, they knew those three numbers that we want from them. Because they knew a cost for each department to do that and now to not get those numbers. Yeah, we always We have been, but we shouldn't be with the twenty-five percent franchise fees coming down the road, you know.
So I
I'm sorry, that they had a plant on Wallace Road and vegetation was of no issue.
We all We all knew what was said.
I have nothing to say.
We have five minutes left on the scheduled meeting, so uh
I don't even know the words to it. Sing it for, sing it for Phyllis.
We will need to schedule another workshop because as you stated earlier, the the feedback and input you've given us tonight, we will go back as staff and remodel uh some of the spreadsheets and numbers to reflect um those options that you have indicated and present, represent them to you in a new setting uh down the road. And we will obviously fix the low hanging fruit like page numbering and things that will make it easier for you to follow along. But, but what we didn't really get to still is a capital improvement plan, which will also have to um recircle back into a subsequent meeting because it's critically important. The things discussed here are your individual opinions and, you know, each, each line item, each issue has a story. It has a series of facts. It has a prioritization that you get to decide as a, as a council and a board. So we'll remodel those numbers, um taking to heart the things that you are targeting or supporting and try to reflect that in the the rebalancing of the numbers to present for you. Yes, I'll, I'll work with staff on, on the production uh elements that that are confusing to you and we'll, we'll get that.
I think it was a rush to get it produced and the staff didn't put the numbers when they did the PDF. Yeah, yeah.
The next set we produce hopefully uh should be fully numbered and and uh easy to follow. Uh, this was a compiled set for the first workshop from the last time. And as Francine has indicated, there are some numbers we already know that need to be moved uh in terms of some of the columns. We'll also make sure that a, that a uh a date stamp and page numbering is in there so that we can just say turn to page eight and look at, you know, line twenty or something.
Can we get an up to date where we are year to date expenditures versus budgeted?
Uh, time permitting, yeah, yes. The, the short answer is yes, you can get that. Um, how quickly we can crank that out with the limited hands on deck right now, we'll, we'll, I'll get back to you and let you know on that.
As I know, there's probably a couple, few hundred thousand dollars that we're leaving on the table this year. So we'll need to know that that's rolling over.
By law, e- every unexpended dollar rolls over into your reserves. It, it expires from its appropriation unless it's been encumbered at September thirtieth midnight, uh assuming it's been re-appropriated for the same or different purpose. That'll show up in the FY twenty-two budget document. I remind you that the budget document is a blueprint um that you run, that I and we all run the town on for the year. Each line item in the budget, whether it's a revenue source or an expense source, is a capacity vessel. If you think of Mesa jars on the shelf, each one, you know, is designed to hold so much for a specific purpose. Uh, if you expend it all, um, you know, that's pretty good projecting. If you don't expend it all, it gets um returned to reserves or whatever designated source. And if something goes over or you re-change your priorities during the year, then budget amendments and other tools are available to move money around accordingly. You know, the budget's a snapshot and a blueprint. And then your auditing uh is to, to prove how all that performed after the fact. So it is a long-term, living, ongoing process and document um scenario that uh you always have a seat at the table, so to speak. But yes, we'll get you those performance items. We have a town council meeting tomorrow night at uh workshop at six o'clock and seven PM, regular council meeting.
Are we going to do this joint meeting again?
It will have to be August thirtieth because your first uh reading is September eighth and your final is September twenty-first.
Okay, well, we don't need to have this meeting again then. We need to get this in front of council so we can vote on some stuff. It's my opinion. If the finance committee wants to meet sooner and develop a list of capital projects, I think Larry needs to submit his list. I don't know if he submitted it this year. A lot of this I saw was rollover stuff, so I don't know if anything changed. But uh But we need to get stuff in front of council, on the council agenda, so couns- council can start doing some voting on some of these issues.
Uh, to reiterate, uh Mayor, your September eighth meeting is your first public hearing and budget meeting.
Yeah.
Uh, and then your second one is on
Twenty-first.
The twenty-first. Those are both advertised public hearings for budget. So if you want any development workshop or reflective time before those public hearings, we would have to set up a meeting between now and then to do that.
We want to make sure that if we do meet, that staff's got a time to compile that and get it on the agenda with the seven days notice, so. No, 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 no. I'm talking about if this committee meets, you know, whatever this committee compiles and then goes to council.
That would be at your first budget here.
Okay, so you think if we do it on August thirtieth?
If you do another joint
Turn over stuff in two days and have it on the agenda?
Oh, okay. I get what you're saying now. Didn't it have to be next? It had to be next week. You'll have to meet again next week.
Okay, I mean, I don't mind. I'll meet next week.
So next
Next Monday?
Next Monday.
All right.
How's um
Next meeting Monday?
Well, before you pick, doesn't have to be Monday night, correct? It could be any night next week or do you have other meetings scheduled there? I'm trying to give everybody enough time to both create the remodeled numbers and you guys enough time to review it.
Or Tuesday, next Tuesday, we don't have a council meeting, so.
It has to be Monday or Tuesday because I have a, we have a chatter on the twenty-fifth.
Twenty-third, six to eight.
All right. Next meeting, Monday the twenty-third at six. Please put that on the town website. Capital projects.
Review the policies.
Bring your top twenty.
And also just please review the policies, especially like Francine submitted that, that page two. What, what, as we discussed last time with the way it was set out is kind of tiers of criteria that may be um in a priority. And then um once we find out that those are acceptable criteria, then we can apply a scoring mechanism to them that will make sense when it, when you plug projects in that Review the prior Yes.
But, but I guess this is a question for you. If these are things that have already been voted on, I guess we'd be changing, they'd be changing
They haven't been, they haven't been voted on collectively. We put the information together so that you would have a resource to look at. Additionally, upon the consolidation, it was stated that district policies became the town's policies, but the town has never looked at the district policies. And the town has its own policies in some cases that are different from the district. I put it all in there. There are three policies I'm looking for. I also spoke with Vice Mayor Donowski about this and the prioritization last Friday when I talked to her. She's actually helping and I also asked you Chair Kane to help me find three policies. Canal restoration, non-district culverts and the fill-in disposition. Mm-hmm. Oh, I know you are. I know you are. Larry is also looking for them. Yeah, Larry is also looking for them. And he's also looking for them.
Thank you. Phyllis, you donated those boards to the town? Thank you. Thank you very much. Great idea. Nice boards. Yeah, those are great. Thank you. All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.